Recording in progress.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for their patience, and for those of you online, for your patience. We just had some technology problems. I'm going to open the Mayor and City Council Workshop and Special Meeting Wednesday, November 19th at 10:08. And we're going to just do a call-to-order roll call again for council, actually, everyone who's on the dais, because we are trying to improve our AI technology. So, Ashley, we're going to start with you, and just go around, say your name.
Ashley Ackerman, City Clerk.
Janelle Cornwell.
I'm Spell, Police Chief.
Joe Elder, City Council.
Galio Saliba.
Amy Morosco.
Alex Burns.
Tim Ritter, Council.
Tina Brown Hicks, Council.
Janet Reeves, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, all. In terms of agenda, any other items, or any -- and we're going to go to announcement, but is there anything on the agenda, council members? Are you fine with what we have? Okay. Announcements, a couple of things. We are continuing our food drive. Thank you, lots of citizens. There are boxes that are in our lobby, and so if you have non-perishable food, please drop it off, because we're getting this to shelters. Also, I want to announce that the farmer's market, just a reminder, they are also doing a big food drive at Saturday's event, so whether you go to the market, or you just want to drop by at their entrance, they will be accepting non-perishable. And you can go into the market and purchase, and they will get perishable food as well to the shelters. So, obviously, a big push, because everyone knows on the news that our shelters are not getting all the funding that they've had in the past, and we're entering a holiday season, we're also entering colder weather, so we need to be able to support our fellow Delawareans. So, thank you, everyone, for your generosity. We are hoping, Ashley, the League of Women Voters are on?
If they are, they don't have their name changed on the --
So, if you're virtually on, the League of Women Voters has a voter registration event on December 10th. Is anyone virtually here representing the League of Women Voters? Okay. If you pop on later, we'll -- I'll just give you the big -- it's written on the agenda for those who have it, but on Wednesday, December 10th, at 10:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Milton Public Library, this is a voter registration event, and it's also, I believe, a training. So, the League of Women Voters just wanted to get this message out to our citizens. Okay. One of the main focus, and you'll see this in the first presentation, D1, is to talk about the need of individuals in our county, nationwide, of course, but in our county, and particularly individuals that have come to Lewis, that do not have homes and that have need. Many citizens who have been very generous, seeing individuals that have been on our streets, particularly outside of St. Peter's Church over the last month, have raised the awareness for some, and reaffirmed the knowledge of others, that not everyone is as fortunate as we are. So, I wanted to have Carolyn Kelly, Executive Director of Family Promise of Southern Delaware, and Nancy Alexander, Director of the Community Resources Center, talk about what their services are and what their needs are. And Reverend Jeff is here, too, not asking you to make a formal presentation, but you have really, your church and your parishioners have opened their arms, as have other churches, and we just wanted you to comment about what you're seeing. The idea is, how do we help? That's the main purpose. So, I'll start with D1, Carolyn Kelly, come forward. And again, this is information for our community, but it's also your opportunity to tell us so that we know what you all need.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to share what we do. Thank you for your previous support of our efforts, and your ongoing support of the folks that we serve. I'm Carolyn Kelly. I'm with the Family Promise of Southern Delaware, and we serve families who are struggling with housing insecurity in all of Sussex County. We also now serve families who are experiencing homelessness. So, Family Promise started three years ago in this area, but we are an affiliate of a national organization that's been around since the 80s. They were one of President Bush's thousand points of light. So, there's been a Family Promise in northern Newcastle County. We are new here, and I was their first employee. I'm happy to say I'm not their only employee anymore. I have two case managers who do a wonderful job, directly supporting the families that we support. We started our program primarily focusing on prevention, because prevention is really the most efficient way to stop homelessness before it even starts, in that we assist families with paying back rent or utility shut-offs that would result in them becoming homeless. We spend about an average of $540 on each family, and what that means is that they're now no longer at risk of becoming homeless. The vast majority of our families find themselves in these situations, not because of behaviors or mental health, or even substance abuse, it's because something financially happens. Most of our families in this area are living like a thread, that their income barely covers what they need. And then if something happens, like a car repair, or the refrigerator goes up, or they lose a couple of days because they were sick, that completely upsets the entire apple cart. And they find themselves making those tough decisions. Do I pay my rent, or do I buy food? Do I pay my rent, or do I get my kids' school supplies? And so, the majority of our families are all working families who just find themselves caught in this housing in affordability situation. The motto for our homeless prevention program comes from Desmond Tutu, and it says, "We need to stop just pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in." So, with our prevention program, we try to sort of help in the immediate, but then talk to them about how they ended up in this situation. So, it could be, you know, could be that they need a better job, and so we try to help them find a better job opportunity. It could be a childcare issue, or, you know, something along those lines. So, we try to sort of work with the immediate crisis, and then sort of delve into where, why they may have found themselves in this situation. I often say, because people often ask me, "Well, do you offer budgeting classes and things like that?" Yeah, absolutely, we do. But the reality is, you can't budget your way out of poverty. One plus one will always equal two. It will never equal four. So, for our folks, with the rents being what they are, they really often find themselves in a situation that is not of their making. So, we have helped 404 families since our inception. That's 489 adults and 896 kids. Of those, we've also assisted 69 families to move from a transitional program, or hotel program, or a temporary situation into permanent supportive housing by assisting with first month's rent and/or security deposit. We recently were the recipients of a HUD grant. This is a blessing and a curse at this point, but we have a rapid rehousing grant that started in January. We received the funding in July, and so we started that program right when we received the funding. We've assisted five families through that program so far. Of the five, three have been housed, and we intend to continue to do that program until we are not able to do that program anymore. It is, HUD did just release their notice of funding opportunity, and they changed the rules on us on how that funding can be used. So, whereas it used to be, the state has awarded $9.9 million. Now, they'll only be able to use up to $3.4 million in what's called permanent supportive housing. So, that includes our rapid rehousing program, any program that provides supportive housing for folks with disabilities. That all is going to be capped to 30% of a total award. So, a number of programs like ours may, will be cut. We don't know, it just came out on Friday, so we don't know how that's going to shake out. But it's unfortunate, because the program really does work, and we've illustrated that by getting three of the families already in housing. I just want to mention, just a couple of statistics, I'm not going to bog you down with them, but 27% of the homeless in Delaware are children, people under 18. So, family homelessness is often not seen, and the reason for that is that parents know that if they're caught living in their cars, they may lose their kids. So, they try to hide, either, you know, in their cars, or they try to get hotel rooms in less-than-savory places, or they go back to abusive relationships, or they go live with less-than-healthy adults that have probably created part of the problem. So, family homelessness is one of those things that you just don't see, but it's there, I can assure you. And the more I've, in fact, when I started this job, I had no idea, but now, you know, I kind of see it more and more, and I think we're going to see it more and more, especially with these cuts in the HUD funding. So, I'm going to get off my soapbox, but thank you very much for your time and for your support of our efforts. The families that we support are grateful for everything that you have given to us to help them, and we're just going to keep doing the work. Thanks.
A couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if a citizen is hearing this appeal, how do they reach out? How do they?
So, I brought some information. Family Promise is, we have an office right here in Lewis. We're at Nassau Commons, above the Atlantic Millworks Building. We primarily, the best way to help us is financially, and I know that that's a tough sell right now, and folks are struggling. And we see that in terms of donations and things. We are very fortunate to be supported by a number of the local area churches, and we're super grateful for that. That's what makes us able to help the families that we help, because there isn't any state, local, or federal funding for the prevention work that we do. We spent about $90,000 last year helping families. We're at about $60,000 this year helping families, and that's all been raised through donations, and churches, and kind citizens who help us to make that happen. So, donations is the best way to help us. Yeah.
Council, any questions?
I have a question. Regarding the HUD grant that you described.
Yes.
How much did you receive?
We received $300,000.
Okay.
So, we have a contract for this year, and we have a contract for next year, next calendar year.
And it'll be funded at the same level, or?
Yeah, so it'll be funded at $300,000 for next, starting January, and then the new one would start January 2027. The question is whether we want to, we can take some of that funding and parlay it into potentially some transitional housing, which I think would not be a bad thing, but we just have to wait and see, because it's for the whole state. So, we don't know how that's going to shake, it's a combined application for the entire state that the Housing Alliance manages. So, they have to figure out --
They allocate from what they receive. Is that right?
Yeah, and they have to allocate of that three-point, whatever, 3.5 million, how much of that's going to go to us and to others, potentially, other providers. Those permanent supportive housing programs have served, they served 1,000 individuals and families last year, so it's potentially going to affect 666 families and individuals.
Those are Delawareans.
Those are Delawareans, purely Delawareans, yeah.
Thank you.
Nancy, do you want to?
And so, information you have, Ashley, in blue, some stuff can go on our website, and also out in the lobby for citizens. Thank you. Okay. And Nancy Alexander, Director of the Community Resources Center.
Good morning, everyone. I want to thank a number of people in this room. I want to thank, we met with the police at one point to talk about how kind you all are to people in distress. This body gave us money for our summer program, our winter program, and our summer program. We were able to be open seven days a week during the hottest part of the summer for our homeless clients in our shelter. So, first of all, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. Community Resource Center is an outgrowth of a program from the Lewis Rehoboth Association of Congregations, which supports us to a great extent. We're very grateful for their support. We've been around for about 13 years. I've been there for about two and a half years. It's absolutely amazing. Our mission statement includes a description of helping people move towards sustainability and stability with families and individuals. We have a food rescue, which right now is seeing a 6% to 8% increase in daily visitation. We have a baby pantry, which last week saw its highest number ever of visiting families. We have a financial emergency, financial assistance program, and it is for both families and households that don't have children. We help about 350 families a year with about $350,000 in assistance. That's late rent, utility payments, things like that, because what we want to do is keep people housed, so it's homelessness prevention. We also do have a program where we provide, and we've provided for 80 families now, first month's rent and security deposit. If we feel that a family can sustain, or a household can sustain moving forward, we will give them first month's rent and security deposit to move into a place to give them some stability. We do have our day shelter. We have about 3,200 visits annually from about 3,000 clients. Folks can come in, they can get a shower, they can do laundry, usually during the rest of the year. That's not our winter program. We give them a breakfast sandwich in the morning. We're starting our winter program on December 1, and it will run through the end of March. Last year, we saw an increase from an average of 25 people a day to about 30 to 35 people a day. We know for sure that we're getting another seven people every day. So, we're open seven days a week from 7:30 in the morning until 5 o'clock at night. So, we also staff that program, and we are fortunate to have members of the community who bring hot meals for lunches. So, if you want to come by, you want to get to know some of our clients, sitting down at a table and sharing a meal with them is a great way to do that. So, we do provide a lot of services. I think one of the things that you're curious about here is people who are truly homeless. So, when someone comes into our day shelter, we do now have, thanks to several funders, including you for the summer, a service navigator, and that person can help that homeless person if they've lost their social security card, get another one, do a variety of things. We also work with nurses and neighbors, so they can see a client. Obviously, they can't prescribe medicine or do major things, but they can encourage the client to go ahead and move on and get more care. We also partner with BB Healthcare in the wintertime. So, we do provide a number of services. I'll give you an example of one client. I'll just call him Mark. Mark came into our homeless shelter, was a steady Eddy. We saw him pretty much every day. We saw some potential in him, helped him, because we also do have a job center, helped him get a resume together, and he now has a job. The issue is transitioning him from having that job to having that job and finding a place to live. Unfortunately, Mitch does not earn enough in his job, which we've checked back in numerous times. He shows up every day, he's a stellar employee, but finding an affordable place for someone like Mitch to live is tough for us. I think everyone is trying to help everyone. I think permanent supportive housing for a number of these folks who really cannot manage themselves would be the key. Unfortunately, those opportunities don't exist very often here in Sussex County. I think they need a place to stay. I think they need qualified personnel. I know that Family Promise has a person with a master's degree in social work, who just spoke to you. We have a person who has a master's degree in social work on our staff. You need a place to stay, you need qualified personnel, and you need to be able to pay those personnel. Those are big-ticket items. Don't expect you all to solve that in a day, but if everyone could sort of encourage that to happen without saying they don't want it in their backyard, because homeless folks are here, whether they're housed or they're unhoused, and if everyone can move toward that goal, that would be the best for everyone.
So, in Sussex County, we do not have a family shelter. Is that correct?
We do not.
We do not. So, but the other two counties do?
Newcastle does. I'm not 100% sure about Kent any longer.
So, I know that my experience talking to some of the homeless that were in Lewis on Second Street, they wanted to stay together, couples wanted to stay together, but because we don't have a homeless shelter for family, they chose to stay on the street, or to go into a church overnight, rather than to be separated. So, that problem is occurring for, and then you can just translate that down to children as well, obviously. Okay.
So, most of the people who are in our homeless shelter every day, day after day, which we run it year-round, but starting December 1 through March 31, seven days a week from 7:30 in the morning till 5 o'clock at night, they do run Code Purple at night, but there's nowhere for them to transition. They need support. They need, the reason they're at my facility is because they need support. And we can put them on a list for housing, but there's either, very few spaces where they can afford, even if they're getting public support. It's very hard to find a place for them to live. So, even if we find a place for them to live, that can take two years, and there just aren't enough affordable housing options for them, number one, and number two, they need help every single day. They're with us during the day, we take care of them as much as we can, but a permanent supportive housing situation, even for individuals, does not exist.
Questions from council?
Where is the Community Resource Center?
We are, the best way to describe it is, as you're heading south on Route 1, we're across from Big Fish Grill, behind PenCo Plumbing Supply. So, we're tucked away, it's very accessible, there are two bus stops nearby, which is why we love where we are. They did a great job finding us a place with, L-Rac found a great job, L-Rac owns the building. So, we are there, and we are open generally 9:00 to 3:00. Obviously, we're there longer than 3:00 in the afternoon, but our food rescue's open every day, if you know someone who is food insecure, every day from 10:00 to 12:30.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Reverend Jeff, do you want to just come forward and kind of, you've been on the front line, to say the least, you and your church and parishioners?
So, my name is Jeffrey Ross. I'm the rector of St. Peter's Church. St. Peter's has been here in Lewis since 1681. Our first building was built in the beginning of the 1700s, and ever since that time, we've always left the building open, except when the British were bombing in 1813 and a couple other occasions. But for the most part, we keep the building open unless there's something we need to secure inside, or if we're having problems with some folks who are taking advantage of the space. Over the years, I've served here, I've been here over 20 years. St. Peter's has always had the door open. We've had people who drank too much on Second Street, needed a place to stay instead of driving. We've had people who were abuse victims and needed a safe place for the night. We've had people who were in distress and have come and just spent the night, or people who just want to stop in and say a prayer. During that time, there are three things that we expect from everybody who stays, that they respect the space, that they respect each other, and that they do not continue to do drugs or drink while they're in the church. Recently, this summer, we had to add a fourth rule, which was, please keep your clothes on at all times. So, during my time here, I have, I can't say enough words of support for the police chief and for their officers. They have been exceedingly kind and exceedingly supportive of us, and very, very willing to help when we need it. Fortunately, I hope we don't call them too much, but every once in a while, we do have folks who exceed one of those four things, and we have to lock the church up to help them move on, or we need the police to help us get them to move on. So, we also do an art show every summer, and all of the money that we raise goes back into the community. The line share goes to the Community Resource Center to help them be able to help people who are in need. When folks come to us and are at the church, we try to encourage them to get them down to CRC. That's not always something they're willing to do, but we do as much as we can. During the summertime, it's really important for folks to have a cool space to be able to hang out, and in the winter, it's important for them to be in a place that's warm. So, for some reason, these guests that we had towards the end of the summer and the beginning of the fall decided they wanted to camp out, not go inside the church, so that's been a relatively new experience, and they also decided that they wanted to be in front of the wall, not on the property. I don't know why they made that choice, but that was unusual for us, so.
Any questions or comments from council?
Do you have an average number of how many per day or week that you're seeing? And I'm sure it varies.
It varies. It used to be that I would see people once or twice, and then I wouldn't see them again. I'm now seeing people more regularly. When I first came, a homeless person came up to me and said, "Hi, my name is so-and-so. Father Doug wants me to tell you to put me up at the Hotel Vesuvio for the night, because I come through twice a year, and that's what you have to do." I had to explain to him that I'm not a travel agent, but I would say, in general, on a rule, except for one person that has been with us for two years, people don't stay with us very long. They usually go into a shelter. This one woman has been with us for over two years, and she is not very trusting of others, and so a shelter is not something she's willing to do, so, unfortunately.
I have a question for you, Reverend. For your guests who are in the church overnight, does the church have a representative on-site also during that time?
No, no. The church does have Google cameras inside of it, and so my phone lights up when people are coming in, so I can see who they are, but we don't have, we don't have somebody there spending the night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much for the open arms.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Spell.
And Chief, just a general comment, just reminding citizens the right of the homeless.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, this year, we have had more complaints than previous. You know, I understand the perception about safety and concerns some residents have expressed for what they termed as the unsightliness of the homeless, but I want to make it clear that our legal reality is, is that being homeless is not a crime. We go to great lengths to ensure that we treat them with dignity and respect like we do all citizens. We strive to do that with everyone, so we don't want to pick on them because of their circumstances, and I think the staff in the police department have done a really good job of doing just that. We, you know, a lot of citizens have seen them on Second Street, but I want everybody to know that we know all them. We've interacted with them, you know, I don't want to say routinely, but multiple times, whether it's to check on their welfare, whether it's to pair resources, to see if they need some help that we can connect them with. So, we know them. Truth be told, we've arrested a few for crimes, and, you know, we're not going to tolerate criminal behavior, but simply being homeless is definitely not a crime. You know, I'm guessing that they don't do it for the money, but the likes of Carolyn and Nancy are certainly much appreciated in the area, for sure, in their ability to help those less fortunate. So, we do rely on them. They're constantly under stress financially, we get that, too. But, you know, I want to stress, it's not a crime to be homeless, and we're going to treat them with dignity and respect that they deserve. We've had no complaints in the city based on the unoutstanding or interaction with citizens, threatening anybody, they're not vetting, they're not giving any, that I'm aware of, that we've had complaints of. So, that's good, they're just nice.
Well, thank you, Reverend Jeff. Thank you. Nancy, thank you as well. And citizens that continue to be generous, particularly during this holiday season, let's think about all of Delawareans and what else we can provide. So, we wish we had more ARPA money, we wish there was another program, and we're very glad that we've been able to support you in the past, but hopefully by bringing you in and others hearing about it, we're communicating the efforts. And I know that our local elected officials have been chatting with me about how do we address a family shelter in Sussex. So, the awareness is at our state senator and our representatives as well, so people are, and also the Sussex County commissioners as well. So, there are a lot of people starting to work behind the scenes for what is going to take a long time to happen, but it doesn't mean that we don't keep working on it. So, thank you for just bringing that awareness.
I did have a question.
Sure.
And it's for any of you who presented or associated with the groups. Have you been, I've been reading a lot in the paper about some of the things they're doing just in general in Sussex County to try to make housing more available. Have you been working with the folks in Sussex County? And the reason I'm asking is, we have a perimeter around Lewis that is really undeveloped, but the way it's zoned, it's not allowed to become high-density, affordable housing, and that would solve a lot of our problems, because we're kind of packed pretty tight in the city, and we have nothing around us, but there is this little buffer around us that could potentially -- But there is this little buffer around us that could potentially be explored for that type of thing.
Carolyn, do you want to come back up to the mic? So folks that are virtually can hear you as well.
So yes, I'm also a member of the Sussex Housing Group, which is a group that focuses on specifically Sussex County and the barriers to affordable housing, zoning being definitely one of them. Some of it has to do with just the affordability of creating that housing. I know that the council, the Sussex County Council has created some buy-right incentives for developers to create affordable housing such that there are some hoops that they don't necessarily have to jump through if they agree to do a 25% set aside. For example, that new development on 24 and Burton, I think it's Burton's, Sub-Burtons. Anyway, it's going to be, there's going to be a 25% set aside. That being said, that set aside, the rent is still $1,000, still $1,200, still pretty high, especially if you're talking about someone who's on SSI or SSDI and just it doesn't have the capacity to do the work. That income is, that rent is based on income, but not the true definition of affordability, which is 30% of your income towards rent, no matter what you make. That affordability is sort of geared towards what they call the working poor, which I would still argue is still making a decent income. In terms of like Section 8 and that kind of stuff, they haven't done any new developments in Sussex County since, I want to say the 80s, don't quote me on that. So that has not happened at all, but we keep trying to advocate for it.
Great. Thanks for doing that.
Certainly.
There's work to be done, for sure.
A lot of work to be done.[708.16][708.16](Laughter)
Thank you very much. And Nancy and Carolyn, you are very welcome to stay, but it's not rude to leave as well. You have other work to do, but you're welcome to stay as well. And same to Reverend Jeff too. The chief, you got to stay.[721.00][721.00](Laughter) Yeah.
Do you entertain any questions?
Absolutely. You know what? On this topic, yes, come on forward. Just say your name and your address. Thank you. That's it.
My name is Carol Pozillo and I live in Lewis, over in Plantations. And I'm from the Mission Committee in the Lewis Presbyterian Church and I'm also a city volunteer over at the Georgetown SPCA. So we see over there, a lot of people coming in for assistance with their pets, food, and then they need to know about animals and et cetera. I wondered if we have a listing of the resources. The two that were just represented here, it seems like the winter shelters don't house very many men at that 14 or something and 14 women at the other. That doesn't really cover very many people. I don't know how many were in the Thoros Village this summer. There were probably more than that. But do we have these things put together, like where there are places to get food? I talked with the Cape School District, the gentleman who works with homelessness, and he said, right now, as far as they know, there aren't students living in cars because they'd have to be reported, but we know there are. But they also have collections of resources at the schools and families they're trying to sponsor, for example, for the holidays. It just seems to me, we're a small town. Do we have this information put together that organizations working with people can also be, or just individual citizens can know where to refer somebody and what our resources are and then look at what we need to do to augment or fill in gaps?
I think of your comment. Carolyn and Nancy, you might be the ones best to answer if you know there's a central repository.
There really isn't. You can call Delaware 211. Some referrals, we have.
If you guys could go to the mic, sorry, because people who are virtual cannot hear you.
It depends on the service provided. So the Food Bank of Delaware does have a list of its partner organizations. I have a list of food banks that we can also refer people to. But we are, when people come, we serve the people who come to us, no matter where they come from. So it depends on the resource that you're looking for.
So actually, we could, I mean, I don't think our website's going to be a place that a homeless person necessarily is going to go to, but citizens who want to know what are the resources and how can they support. So we could look at putting those pieces together. And I know that we asked the city manager to look at that last year when we allocated the ARPA funds to. So I think we have, you know, a decent list, but let's get out and share information.
Can I follow up on that real quickly? So I think you're 100% right. There's not like a central, you know, hub where you can go get information. Although I speak fairly frequently with Mike Agnew of Camp Teros, who does, has the same concerns, but, you know, a lot of, but he says he works really well with everybody and to the point you raised earlier, about 14 beds at St. Jude's and 14 for women at the Lutheran Church, that's accurate. And Mike has been working very hard in the Rehoboth area, trying to find a new building there as well. But the coordinate, I mean, we all have issues with coordination with the state and counties and others. So I can, I totally understand how it might be an issue for you, working with your partners that are doing same mission, but different strategies. And so, but I do know Mike Agnew is working pretty well, pretty hard on finding a new facility in Rehoboth to add more beds there. It's tough, like Councilman Elbers, a really tough issue.
Hi, Carrie Tripp, Park Avenue, but here today as part of the Lewis Finance Committee, which I want to throw a pitch is having, so I don't think I'm on a three-minute clock today, am I? I don't have that. Sheesh, I always sweat. So I do want to, I do want to throw a pitch that today, Lewis has held a meeting to encourage nonprofits to come and talk about the grants that we now have available. And I know they're a bit restrictive maybe for some of the groups because you have to be incorporated in Lewis in our initial pilot. But our goal is really to help people in Lewis. But I, the mayor and I have talked about this before. We know that this problem is going to get much worse, given what we're seeing in government funding. So I had, and I'm thrilled to hear other people have identified this problem. And when I heard how well the Lewis police are working within our community, I thought the simple solution was, let's get everybody together at that meeting, kick off a subcommittee on homelessness, food insecurity, things like that, and have everybody share what they're doing. And then maybe we could write that up in a small paper that the police could give out, at least in Lewis, to everyone they encounter, so that gets directly to them. And then maybe we could find some sort of fund that would at least allow them transportation to come to you, to get that meal, to come to you, to, you know, find job sources and stuff. So anyway, I'm going to kick that off this afternoon. If you could stay, that would be great. If you can't stay, feel free to send an email to me. You can find me just about anywhere these days and we should all get together. We're doing the right thing. We're stepping in where the government isn't or isn't able to and let's just make sure it gets directly to the sources that need to do it.
Carrie, where is that meeting?
Four o'clock today. And I think it's up at the Rawling Center.
Yes.
Is there a virtual component to that meeting, Carrie?
I believe there is.
Yes, this, it's a board meeting.
So you won't have to be there in person, you can do it online.
Yes. So let's take this energy. Let's not lose this energy. Let's get everybody together. Let's talk about what we're able to provide now. Get that known and maybe distribute it and then keep working to get more out there. So I think it's terrific. Thanks.
Thank you for that suggestion, Carrie. Also, University of Delaware, actually, right now, at the same time, is hosting a homeless webinar. So we're all concerned, but we don't want it just to be a holiday concern. So we got to, I think Carrie's idea is a terrific one. And Chief, we could see what it is that we can get for you for information. And then I also, I know that our city manager and deputy city manager have spoken about, related to the nonprofit grants, putting something in the Cape Gazette so that nonprofits are aware. We've certainly invited the ones that we know of, or the majority that are housed here. As Carrie said, the finance committee is piloting first for nonprofits who are incorporated in Lewis. But we also understand that there are nonprofits outside of the city limits who serve people that are in Lewis. So we're going to try this step first and then we'll be rolling out. The finance committee will then evaluate what comes forward. But we are going to commit to putting something in the paper because those applications are due very soon. They're very easy.
December 1?
December 1. December 1. But it's a very easy application. Yes, Reverend Jeff?
I forgot to mention one other thing, which is to thank everyone for their support of our blessing box. It's out front, a little cupboard. It gets emptied every day. And that's how fast the food is coming in and going out. Thanks to the generous donations of our neighbors, not just our members, but neighbors who keep that stocked. But the demand is really real. And if people are looking for something, they can concretely do. Just when you pick up something at the supermarket that's shelf-stable, please feel free to bring it by and leave it at the box, so.
Glad you mentioned that because I know two women in particular in town, when they saw the number of homeless folks on Second Street, they took it as their private mission. While they saw people, they would, they would fill that pantry every day. So, and these were people that were not, you know, were not doing this in the past.
I don't have to tell you, Lewis is an exceedingly kind and compassionate community and the generosity of, that I've seen of citizens who have nothing to do with the church, but are just good people. It's just heartwarming and wonderful to be a part of this city, so thanks.
Thank you for the shelter you offer. Thank you all very much. It's good conversation and good suggestions to keep working together. All right, let's move on to D2. Deputy Mayor, do you want to introduce this?
Sure. So we're going to get an introduction to a concept called Porch Fest that happens in approximately 40 cities around the country, different times of the year, I think, or most of the times, it's the fall. But Seth Block, who is the general manager of the Dogfish Inn, is coming up and she approached me about this a few months ago and has been really doing some diligent work, meeting. She's met with the chief and I and others to understand if this is something that would fit in the city of Lewis and if this would work. And I had suggested to Seth after a number of meetings that this public workshop is a great forum to introduce new topics and this would be certainly something new to the city of Lewis. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Seth.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good morning. As Khalil said, I am the general manager of the Dogfish Inn in Lewis, Delaware. I'm coming up on a little over than three years in the position. I am now also a resident of Lewis. Woo, I was driving from Milford every day. That was not fun.
Welcome.
Thank you. And it's been an incredibly warm welcome. In the three years that I've been working here, as well as two years as a resident, I have very much come to love Lewis. I love the events that are hosted. I think the community and the connection is something that has absolutely resonated with me year over year. In my work and as a local, I've met many of our local musicians, artists, businesses owner, business owners and neighbors through the wonderful events that the town hosts through the year. And I've noticed something important. Our creative talent is definitely growing. When artists and musicians have opportunities, it strengthens our entire community. Lewis is a town that truly values community and connection. We already have a rich tradition of events that bring us together, such as the farmer's markets, Hospitality Night, the Fourth of July, and now we'll be celebrating our 250th next year, which is going to be incredible. All of those things, they showcase our love for celebrating local businesses, history and neighbors. Seeing this energy and pride has inspired me to think about new ways we can support our local artists, musicians and creative community. This is why I'd like to share with you an idea that Lewis has inspired in me, which is called Porch Fest. A little background on that. The idea of Porch Fest began in 2007 in Ithaca, New York. Two neighbors, a ukulele and a simple idea, what started as a casual porch jam grew into a neighborhood music event. Local musicians performed on porches, in yards and driveways. The event remained free, small and community-driven, yet it spread nationwide. It's in now currently 230 cities across the Atlantic. Wilmington beat me to the punch. If you haven't seen already, they did have a Porch Fest this year. I've spoken with the host and it was incredibly successful. It celebrates local talent. It brings neighbors together. It creates a shared experience that is entirely volunteer-powered and authentic. It's the perfect town here in Lewis to bring this idea of life. As I've mentioned, we already have a rich tradition of events that bring our community together, showcasing our love of local connection and celebration. Porch Fest fits naturally into that tradition. It's giving a new, family-friendly outlet for music, art, that reflects our town's history, character, creativity. And unlike a large festival, this would be a small, local, people-powered, highlighting Lewis's shops, historic sites and neighborhood charm. How I envision this to be, we would host it on a potential Saturday in October. The weather's beautiful and I'm thinking 2026, so we have ample time to plan. It would involve the community. Local homeowners and businesses would volunteer their porches, yards and outdoor spaces to serve as small performance spots throughout the town. Musicians and artists would volunteer their craft, sharing their talent from those porches and yards in a casual, welcoming way. Neighbors and visitors would move between location by foot, by bike and along our beautiful trails, creating a relaxed and safe flow of people. The event would be family-friendly, entirely volunteer-driven, starting in the early afternoon and ending early ahead of the evening. It would organically highlight our local businesses, historic charm and the character of Lewis while giving residents and visitors a chance to enjoy music, art and genuine community connection. It benefits the community. If I'm repeating myself, I do apologize, but I feel very passionate about it. It's going to give local musicians and artists a platform. From what I've told from people who have lived here for many, many years, Sussex County as a whole had a lot of outlets and we've sort of seen a decrease in that and now we're starting to see an increase. And I think that it is an absolute wonderful opportunity for Lewis to join on that bandwagon. As we know, we have the Listening Booth that's just across the way. We have the Lewis Historical Society. I also know that the artist community, I've actually met a few locals who do unbelievable artwork showcasing our trails and the birds that we see. Why not give them an outlet to share that and allow all of us to come together and enjoy? My goal is simple. Explore bringing a small-scale, locally-driven Porch Fest to Lewis with your input and support. I want to create an event by the community, that's for the community and one that reflects who we are and the creativity that we share. Thank you for your time and I implore any questions? Yes, sir?
I have a question for you. It seems like it would be for a person that has a porch, but let's say the Burton subdivision decides they would like to host a musician in one of the driveways. Could we apply and?
Absolutely.
Bring people into our neighborhood for a little part of the festival?
Absolutely. In the presentation that I hope everyone got, and I also have some printed copies, you will see that since this has taken off, I hate to say there are no rules, but there are no rules. Anyone that is willing to volunteer their space and their time, there is no no to that. If you are someone who likes to play guitar on the back porch for their family, we welcome it. We'll give you that outlet. So businesses, community centers, anywhere, anywhere.
Other questions from council?
I just wanted to mention that my husband, who's, who passed away, but he was a musician and oftentimes in front of our patio, he would be outside playing his guitar. And public would just, it was just something that he did, that he loved. But yeah, I enjoy that. I miss it.
It's really wonderful. I am originally from New Jersey. I was, I lived in, I was a resident of Red Bank and then I was also a resident of Asbury Park. Red Bank has done this year over year on a much smaller scale. Asbury Park, as I'm sure you know, they blow everything out of the water. Again, not what I'm looking for, but as someone who has attended both of those, it was tremendous. I mean, you're talking about, there was participation from the local high schools and the grade schools. That is also something that we can also bring on. You have talent all the way, starting from 10 years old, to folks who are retired. I also know there's a few people that are hiding in Lewis that have had some pretty incredible music careers in their time. And I think that this, music and art brings people together, outside of food.[1698.21][1698.21](Laughter)
And your design is beautiful. I understand you did the graphic design for?
I may have had a little digital help with that, but I can absolutely take credit and sign my name at the bottom.
It's really nice.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
In these other communities where Porch Fest has taken root, is, are all the events, the venues on private property?
Yes, yes. So from the research that we have done and then from other organizers that I've spoken to, if you are a homeowner and you're willing to volunteer your home, you have homeowner's insurance. This is something that, again, when I speak, community-driven, family-friendly, any sort of paperwork or documentation that goes out to the public is going to stress that. I envision that this is very much going to be like your go-forth parade. People are incredibly respectful. They mine themselves to the sidewalks outside of Second Street. And I also am optimistic, if for whatever reason, we don't have so many homes, I have the Dogfish Inn, we have a beautiful fireside, we're going to use our porch. I've spoken with Andrew at the Lewis Historical Society, who has so many different spaces throughout the town, which also, as people are walking through, they're going to read about our history. They're going to frequent our businesses and our restaurants.
One of the things, I think, to consider and not to brand Lewis 250 because you have your own initiative and you're a great sponsor for Lewis 250. But people historically heard their music, unless they were very wealthy. They heard music around campfires. They heard music around campfires, in neighborhoods, in homes. And so, to me, kicking it off in our semi-quintcentennial year might be a connection of we're bringing music back the way it was. And then the benefit is Lewis 250 also markets for you in addition to whatever you're doing.
I have that on the second page, 110%. Thank you for reminding me about that.
And so, because this is not about using any city property, there's no permitting, I think that's where Councilwoman Woodson was headed. This is private, or maybe you weren't headed there, but this is not a private, this is private people doing it, so there's no city issue except to say go for it.
No different than when we do the house tours.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I think it's really exciting. So, let us know how the city can help get the word out. But thank you for bringing such an innovative idea.
Appreciate it, and thank you so much for enthusiasm.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to?
Can I follow up on that one second?
Oh, yeah.
So, that sounds fun.
You need to introduce yourself again.
Carrie Tripp, 400 Park Avenue, again. Same person, same place.
Do you want to be timed this time?
No. I'm not going to talk that long, though. But what I was following up on this, great idea, Joe, looks like he's already volunteered to leave, give his front yard.
I was thinking of your front yard.
We can go the whole way around the side. It's small, but we'll get there. But anyway, I think it's a great idea and I think it follows into something that I'm about to share with you, which is, you probably heard that the building that has the Cape Artists is up for sale, which means that group of local Lewis artists will have to be displaced. The good news is, somebody from Ship Carpenter Square, and I don't want to steal his thunder, he'll do a press release, has offered to and is leasing the building next to Jeff Weiss that's also up, and he's going to make that the Lewis Art Gallery, which is a nice way for us to have community, for friends to come together, to view art, to talk about art, and for local Lewis artists, it's focused on local, local Lewis artists to be able to display. And that hopes to open in January. So, everyone get out the word, because this is on us as a community. Will this, will this arts effort survive? And I think it's a good one, and it ties nicely into this as well. Thanks.
I would, I would just simply add what Seth and Carrie were saying as well, is, one of the conversations we've had around this is not really to go seek out established artists who are well-known and others, you know, certainly they're welcome, but to offer opportunity to younger artists who may not have opportunities to play at certain venues and others. Artists, meaning both musical and paint, photography, whatever, you know, physical art that's going to be displayed. But anyhow, that was what really appealed to me initially was, you know, and that also allows Seth, the city of Lewis and others and our businesses to also partner with the Cape and Lippin School District, one of our stakeholders here, to work with them to get their students who may not have opportunities to perform, but now can perform. And I think it's a great idea and, you know, the details will have to be worked out and such, but thank you again, Seth, for coming and offering, what a great idea. And hopefully we can get some, the guardrails that are needed around it, but definitely a great idea for the city of Lewis.
It reminds me of being in Charleston with Spoleto and Piccolo. You know, you have just music and art everywhere. It feels wonderful to community. When you are ready with your materials, Seth, let us know and we can also put that as an announcement in a council workshop or council meeting, so we can get that route.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go on to E1, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Ordinance to Amend Chapter 197, Zoning Section 45 Use Restrictions. 197-106 Definitions and Attachment One Table, One of Permitted Uses and Structures, also known as Home-Based Business. I'm going to start actually with our city attorney, because at our last meeting, there were a lot of issues, topics that council came up with, and you have made some recommended changes to the draft that the LPC gave us.
Mayor? Is that on now?
Yeah.
Blue, do you have a digital copy you could pull up on the screen? Great, that would be perfect. So, I know council has hard copies of the ordinance and this is similar to the ordinance that was presented at the last council meeting on November 10th. The changes from that version that was presented on the 10th are shown in red underline. And one of the primary changes is that this ordinance would also amend Chapter 128, which is the business licensing chapter, put some guardrails around how these businesses would be licensed. So, if you go down to line 52, there's a proposal, a proposed new section 128-6. And the inclusion of this new section would not require another public hearing, because we're not talking about the zoning code here. This is another chapter of the code which does not require a public hearing to amend. And so, for this licensing process, it would require the disclosure of impact level from each applicant for a new or revised license. And again, these are annual licenses, so this would happen every December or so. And if there's any change in operations, that would have to be disclosed. Change in operations that create a new level of impact, those would have to be disclosed. And then clear language that failure to comply with this section would be grounds for suspension or denial of a license or revocation of a license. And these penalties would be in addition to anything under the zoning code. So, this is just putting some guardrails on how this all takes place. I also cleaned up on line 158, that the applicant has the burden of submitting satisfactory proof of a mailing to the planning department, and this is in the context of when there is an application for a business proposal that requires notification of the adjacent neighbors. So, the applicant would have the burden to notify the planning department that they have notified their neighbors, and failure to do so is an incomplete application. I know there was some discussion at the last meeting about potentially modifying whether the applicant has to notify the adjacent neighbors or expanding that. I felt that that would be a substantial change to the ordinance in the zoning code section such that it would necessitate a new public hearing. So, I did not include that in this version, but if you wanted to go that route, for example, the conditional use process requires notification of neighbors within a 200-foot radius. So, we could go with that. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. That appears in a few sections of the code, we could use that. And so, those are the, the major changes. I cleaned up the arbitration process a little bit, starting on line 168, to clarify that the city planner's role is just to hear out objections and that the determination of whether something meets the code is not influenced by any objection. It's just a yes or no, does it meet the code? And those are the primary changes. I know there was also discussion about potentially putting a cap on the number of animals that could be present in facilities. I didn't change that in this version either, because that seemed like a substantial change to the zoning code proposal. And I'm happy to walk through the rest of the changes, but those are some of the key changes.
Yeah, thank you. Listen carefully, that's what the council's concerns, thank you. Let's go into just discussion. So, let's start.
I had a question.
Do you want to start or a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question of Alex. When we discussed impact, of course, the different impact categories were related to the particular neighborhoods that these might, these businesses might end up in. And when I looked at this proposal, the first thing that caught my mind was, you just mentioned it, the definition of neighborhood, and we looked at proximity of 200 feet. We know that some of these businesses could affect people beyond 200 feet of their property. So, I, I didn't know if that, that's something we might want to keep in mind as we talk about this. The other part is, you mentioned that when they make comments, and I, let me find the exact wording here. It said that the planner, whoever's making these decisions, will not take those into consideration in making the decision. And I find that kind of confusing, because at the end of all of our hearings, and even on planning and zoning, we ask people to write in their comments, and we take a lot of time as council people to read those when we make our decisions. So, to have it stated that way in the policy that, that the planner will not take into consideration the comments, would a comment be that a person within 200 feet does not want a daycare next to them? I just don't know how that interacts with what I envision as, and, and believe me, I am supportive of this concept of home businesses. I just think that it needs to be very, very well thought out, that we don't get something out there that we need to be coming back to, because people are very unsatisfied. So, I want to make sure we get it right.
May I just interrupt before you respond? The language that Joe is, Councilman Elder is referring to is on line 171 and 172.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Page five, if you have a hard copy. Thank you, excuse me, and it's underscored. Thank you.
So, thinking with that edit was that the city planner's role in this process would be to say, does this proposal meet the code, yes or no? If there's an objection from the neighbors that changes that analysis, the city planner could be treating folks differently than others based on just objections.
Okay, so what I'm thinking, what I'm envisioning is, if we have within 200 feet, the neighbors do not want that in the neighborhood, maybe they think it's going to be too much parking, or I don't know, who knows what it would be. Then, how would that be handled? It doesn't really say in here how that's handled.
So, the objection piece of it, the, as the first step, the city planner would say, does this meet code, yes or no? If it does not meet code, it cannot be granted. If it does meet code, then the next step is, is there an objection from the neighbors? If there's an objection from the neighbors, it turns into a conditional use process and there's a closer look, and it would be elevated to city council.
Does it say that?
Yes, it does not. It's not a process for the city planner to make that call or attach conditions.
Who makes that call?
Whether there's objections.
So, let's say?
It's not about the content of the objections.
Let's say you get objections from 200 feet could be, well, depending, most of our properties are about 50 feet wide.
In a historic district, that's true.
About 50 feet wide. So, that would mean on either side of that house, you would have four on one side, maybe four on the other, or three and three, but it would be several places that would be impacted. So, that's pretty long distance, but I guess what I'm getting at is, I would think it's almost like a vote, yea, nay. And if it comes back nay?
What you're saying is, the city planners, there was concern on arbitrary and capricious, not saying our city planner would be that way, but if you didn't have strong guidelines, it could look that way, and then it could put the city in a negative potential litigation. What I believe you're saying is, the city planner's role is, it's, it's compliant with what we have written. Then you have neighbors for or against that are in that close proximity. Then does the city planner, then that's a conditional use application, that comes in front of council, right? So, we're the, we're the arbitrator for those, okay?
So, we'll have to make the decisions?
Yes, that's what, yes.
Additional use comes to us.
Always comes to us.
Okay, does it say that in here?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm just checking, because I, I just got this newest copy.
I want to speak in support of what the concern that Joe Elder has raised. I actually think it would be really important that in this section, that the sentence is expanded to suggest what the path is, not suggest, but state what the path is, so that if the presence or absence of objections would then lead into a statement that, you know, that there would be a conditional use referral from the planner to city council and that it advances that way.
And where I'm going?
Hold on a second. That's in, that's in app, but it is there.
I understand that part.
173 to 179 says, if the city planner is unable to approve a home occupation under the standards set forth herein.
Right.
Or if concerns raised by interested parties remain unresolved following the process set forth in the previous section, that's with the city planner, the home occupation shall be deemed denied administratively. And the applicant may then submit a conditional use application for review and approval by the planning commission and the mayor and city council.
Right.
So, that's the path.
Should it say in there, the planner shall record the, I don't, I don't know, how's anyone going to know that it needs to be referred to us, if no one knows?
The planner would do that if, if, go ahead. Janelle, why don't you address?
In line 169, it says, the planner shall issue a brief written determination approving or denying the home occupation.
Okay, and you'll, you'll, would you have to mention what the comments were or what the vote was or what the?
There is no vote at that point. It's, does it comply with code, yes or no, and then why it does or does not comply with code? It's a very straightforward.
But it sounds confusing, because if you have six people on either side saying no, how does anyone know that the business is not supposed to be there because it's been rejected by the neighborhood?
It's not being rejected by the neighborhood, it's being rejected because it doesn't meet the qualifications. If it doesn't, it doesn't fall into the qualifications of a low impact or potential impact, it's just not allowed as a home occupation. If it meets those criteria, then it is allowed, and a determination's made, a letter is written, and then that business license is issued.
So, what if the people on either side in that area you have say, we don't want a daycare right here, right now, we don't have room for it. We don't have enough parking. It's a high impact, we believe it's a high impact, because impact isn't really very well-defined. So, they'll determine the impact, I guess, because since it isn't defined, that's their role to determine whether it's impactful to their neighborhood. That would be my argument. I would say, well, it's impactful to my neighborhood and we all agree it's impactful, so it is impactful. You have no definition of impactful.
So, the, under this proposal, the city planner would determine if something meets the code or not. If the neighbor objects, it doesn't matter what their argument is, it creates a new process.
If daycare, let's use daycare as an example. So, if daycare's allowed, all right, it's allowed, citywide, okay? HOAs have their own rule, we know that. So, daycare is allowed. The city planner says, yes, daycare is allowed. The citizens, neighbors nearby say, oh, no, no, I don't want this. Then they come in front of council.
But how will they know to come in front of council? Because they won't know, they haven't been informed by the city planner.
But on line 169, the city planner shall issue a brief written determination approving or denying. So, if she, if she or he denies it, then they'll have that documentation. And then, just like everything else, we deal, we deal with conditional uses all the time.
And again, I'm not trying to block this, I'm for home businesses, but I'm trying to think this out.
No, clarity's good for everybody.
Now, when we're on H Park or anything else, and, and, Janelle, you did a great job of this, we put a little sign in front of the house now. And I would think that a little sign in the neighborhood saying, business coming, would be a great idea.
If there is an application for a conditional use, that is part of the, there is a, for, there is, there is a physical notice, a yellow sign is placed on the property, and again, letters are sent out, and a legal ad is sent out for a conditional use.
Okay.
So, if, if you want to have a daycare in your house and it meets all the qualifications, your neighbors have no issue, we're going to issue a business license.
Okay, so, let me, let me do another little quick scoop to the side here. Daycares are normally licensable by the state. Your buildings have to be properly inspected. Are you going to make sure that's done?
So, it, it's a weird thing, is that the state won't issue their license with, unless the city has issued their license. It's one of the requirements to get your state business license from the offices of childcare licensing, is that you actually have to have your city license before the state will issue it.
So, they may still turn it down if they come in and find out their?
Absolutely. If they don't have a right, if they don't have the, the correct area or outdoor play area, the state will then deny it, because they don't comply with the state regulations. But one of the state regulations is, you have to have your local jurisdiction's license before you, the state will issue that license.
So, a question, and I'm thinking, if, I'm thinking all these little details, but if I'm going to open a daycare center, would you give me a stay until I get my license? So, I don't have to pay the fee and then not get my license?
I don't think so. I don't, because it, that's, it's like any other license, you need to both have your state license and your city license, if you're working in the city of Lewis. Lewis. And at one point, there's an overlap as to when they're due, because they're due at different times, and the city will issue its license, and if you're doing a daycare out of your house, and you start before your state license comes through, you have other issues. Because that's a state issue.
Is there time for me to go into two other little forays?
Go ahead.
Okay, one. Again, I said, I think things really need to be thought out well. I don't know the impact that this is going to have on our city staff. I don't know the impact that it's going to really have on neighborhoods. So when I'm thinking about this, I look at it and I say, should this go to the finance committee just to do a real quick cost benefit study? A cost benefit analysis?
Of what?
Well, of how much time is it going to take to administer this? Do we have the staff to administer it? Do we have the police personnel to administer it? We're fitting another piece of work in. It's different, we're changing the way it works, but I think cost benefit analysis is very important. Now, I will give you an example. I'm working with Janet on the trash efficiency study. When we get that trash efficiency study done, we will not only have that change, we will have every single detail, soup to nuts, about how this is going to impact city staff and the community, and we will lay it out, every single particular detail. And I just don't feel that this is that far down the road yet. So I'm saying, should we have a little, get a cost analysis benefit study done, and at the same time, get a small committee together to look at how this is going to be impactful upon the city? I am pro this project, but I want to make sure we don't get it out there and find out, oops, we forgot this, because it's harder to fix things then.
Well, you know, I think anytime you put, or you make a new ordinance, or you revise something, there are hiccups that you don't anticipate. It just never ends, okay? So I think that the home, the LPC's Home Occupation Subcommittee spent a lot of that time. What we're really looking at here, and based on our deliberations from the last meeting and comments from the public, is to make sure that we take away any kind of arbitrary process. So that's why code's so important, and I think the way that our solicitor has revised this makes that clear. So I'm not anticipating that there wouldn't be problems, there will be. But this also is self-reporting, and I liked your question very much about, well, if it's a conditional use, it gets one of those yellow signs, because that's like, beware. When I see those, and they're in my neighborhood, I want to know what's going on, right?
Exactly.
As a citizen. But for all of us who have businesses, who do pay license, it relies on self-certification that we come forward in our business license. So this year, when we fill out the business license, we would have to have, we'd have to answer questions, okay? So if you're, this is not for people who work at home, who are employed by other companies, okay? This is not the COVID virtual work. This is, I'm an entrepreneur, I work out of my home, I make Etsy, whatever, okay? I need a business license, because, you know, in the commercial districts, they have to have license. So in other words, it's trying to be fair. If you're doing a small boutique business out of your home, you get a business license and you apply. So I think the application is where the first line of questioning is, and it does rely on self-certification, but a lot of government ruling, like small business set-asides for government federal contracts, that completely relies on self-certification. And it really is only if somebody steps in, so I can, I'm a small business, I'm a woman-owned small business, I declare that. But if you want to challenge that, you have the right to challenge it, but I self-certify.
So my last issue, and then I'll let all of you talk, I might be hitting all the issues, but this is what constituents have been talking to me about.
No, it's helpful, very helpful.
So the final one is, you know, when you have a guest over, you usually make the bed before they get there. You put the comforter on, you put the sheets on, you get ready for them. And we have a parking problem here in Lewis, and I'm very concerned that we're going to have these businesses competing with already established businesses in the central business district. And my other issue, but I'm for small, little startup things, but my point is, is that until we, you know, you tell me I can have a business, but I'm rolling into a neighborhood that only has six parking spots, and I'm going to be there all day, we don't have any timed parking in our neighborhood yet, we don't, we haven't feathered the bed yet. That's why I'm saying, I think this is a good idea, and I think it's going in the right direction, but I do believe that we need to be very sensitive to issues like parking that are already impacting our residents. And I'm not, they've done a great job. I think this is really going in the right direction. I just, I think we need to be sensitive. There are a lot of people out there suffering with what I would call-
Suffering.
Well, they do. We pay a price when we live in Lewis. We reap the benefits, but we also pay a price for all the folks that want to be here, and all the hubbub that goes on. And it wasn't that way 20 years ago, but things have changed, so we need to change. But we need to change incrementally. And I would think that part of the incremental change process would be to try and get this parking under control. I know we're going to kick some things off, December 11th, we're going to start kicking off a committee to really take a good, hard look at parking, and guess what? We're going to do it this time.
We're going to get it done.
We're going to get it done.
Right. But Councilman Elder, what I would say is, what the planning commission gave us is a modern view, what municipalities are going to, just as you said, as impact-based. And impact, what is the impact of your business on the community? Noise, parking, those kinds of things are in the actual application. So, you know, I'll use myself as an example. I have a consulting business, so when I fill out my annual report, and I pay the city of Lewis every year for my consulting business. I have one employee, myself, and I park in my driveway, okay? I'm a no-impact, but I'll fill out that form that will change this year, and I'll have to certify that I do not have clients visiting me, because they all visit me through the internet, okay? So in other words, I believe that the form will get the majority of the no-impact businesses actually legit in paying their business license, all right? And then it's really all going to be whether there's an impact.
So how could we roll this out so that we're going to be done this partner study by May? We've kind of promised each other, we're really going to try and get this done. What if we did the parts of this we could do, and we rolled out the parts to coordinate with our parking project?
So is your recommendation that you would be rolling this out for only the no-impact businesses?
I don't know, help me, I'm just, no, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, but it is all, parking is factored in as an impact. Is it? Yes.
That's probably the key impact in Lewis.
Right.
Is parking number one, and then the second, it's probably going to be noise. Yeah.
Maybe I'm blind to it, I don't know.
May I actually speak to that, and this is one of the things that I earmarked for myself. And this is in, starts on line 57, runs through 60, and this is disclosure of impact level. That disclosure is totally the responsibility of the applicant. There is no, it doesn't suggest that there's any review or discussion that would be held between the applicant and the city to possibly dissuade the person from suggesting that their business is no-impact and actually is low-impact. Their application is taken at face value, and there is no tool here for city, city staff to react to an application that is likely doubtful, okay? Or should be questioned. The other question, the other thing that I see missing here, specific to this section, is that in the notice to adjacent property owners, there's, I don't see any suggestion that the impact is stated or included in that notice that they have to provide to their adjacent neighbors. I think that's a-
Let's take those in two parts. So the first one, Alex, let's address with, I think it's line 62, but I write some language that-
If, line 70- 62 speaks to, once the business has been started, and the operation is underway. This is about the application side.
Wouldn't that be, so if the applicant is falsifying their, I'm putting that in quotes, I have a no-impact business, they present it, they get it, and then we realize, oh, no, it's really an impact. Why wouldn't clause 62, section B, immediately go into place to say, sorry, that's a change, than what, how you presented it to the city?
That's correct, and specifically, I included on line 70, in the second sentence, failure to disclose the correct impact level of a home occupation or a material change in operations required by this section constitute grounds for denial of suspension or revocation of license.
I understand all that part.
The code provides the tools for staff to enforce it. I'm not sure staff has the, always will have the enforcement ability, but they have the grounds for doing so.
I understand all of that, but that is, what I'm suggesting is, is that in the application, before there's a, before there's an approval of an application, it seems to me that there should be some level of, some accommodation, some requirement, that the, there is a discussion between a city staff person and the applicant that addresses the impact. You know, you can suggest that, gosh, I'm just starting my business, I'm getting it off the ground, I'm using my 300 square foot of allotted space to start this business, and therefore, I'm, it's highly questionable, what impact? You know, I don't know, it's, you know? And so you could go in, applying for no-impact, and within, let's say, 120 days, there are, you know, the impact of parking, the impact of noise, the impact of whatever else, is, becomes problematic at that point in time. And yet, you know, we don't have an ability to have that discussion.
So I'll address that, I just wanted to-
Address the second question.
Yeah. If you scroll down to line 158, when we were talking about the notice to neighbors-
Yeah.
It says, the applicant shall submit satisfactory proof of mailing to the planning department. And the sentence before that says, the letter shall request those concerns known to the planning department. So everything, I'm sorry, the sentence before that, the applicant shall send a letter to adjacent property owners stating the same information provided to the planning department in the application.
I'd overlooked that.
So the neighbors will know everything, the city will know.
So at that point in time, it would include the statement about impact?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, thank you for pointing that out, I had overlooked that. Thank you. The other question that I have had, hold on, let me find my scribbled notes. Oh, on line 120, this is 19745, home occupations, hours of operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And my question is, is that Monday through Friday, or seven days a week?
Seven days a week. That's-
The planning commission's recommendation.
Doesn't state, doesn't state Monday through Friday would mean seven days a week.
Right.
So, another question, just, Tim, to throw in there with one of yours. If I move in and I rent an apartment for the summer, can I run a home business while I'm there in that rental unit?
I thought-
Was it? I would only be renting for maybe three months, or six months, but I'm going to bring my stuff with me, and I'm going to run my business out of my rental unit while I'm here.
That's a, that's a good question.
I print t-shirts in my living room, and I take them down and sell them at the beach.
Right. Joe, may I just, in the preamble portion of this document, in the whereas sections, it suggests that, that it's opportunities on line eight, opportunities for residents, and a person who's here for, in that case, what you're suggesting, a summer season, I don't believe that they qualify-
Okay.
-as a resident. We might want to tighten that up by saying domicile in the city. You know, domiciliary is much more correct term to use than resident in this particular, to address your concerns. Yeah.
But your concern is, let's just clarify, your concern is somebody popping in for two months, you're not, your concern is not a full-time resident versus a part-time resident. Right now, resident allows, full-time and part-time. You're just saying someone who comes and visits and wants to do a t-shirt.
And they're going to be here a while, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think, just as another side comment, like, I look at Market, and I've been told that on Market Street now, the majority of homes are rented out, that they're Airbnbs. So those are businesses, and the parking is already a major problem there. That's why I'm saying, I really think we need a plan before we charge people a licensing fee, sell them a bill of goods, and then find out, we've got more of a parking problem than we think. Not that we would discourage these, but it might give us a different point of view.
Sure. May I go back to the point that I may raise regarding the operating hours, please? This, these hours of seven to seven, seven days a week is much more generous than what we allow contractors to operate within the city. And, you know, is that something that we want?
Well, so for example, let's say Amy, Amy has a bakery at her coffee shop, and she's making cookies and pastries and all that stuff, and is she open seven days a week? Are there any that aren't? Well, there are some that aren't, but if I continue to do my business and they're closed, that's putting a business that is in the commercial district at a disadvantage. So they'd have a competitor. We don't allow food trucks to come in because we don't want to take away from our businesses.
We do allow food trucks. That is, that is an urban myth in Lewis. We allowed for food trucks. They must be licensed, clarify, Janet, if I'm wrong, they must be licensed, they pay a fee, and they have to be licensed in the city of Lewis. We do allow food trucks, and they have to-
They have to have approval, an administrative approval from-
All the time?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I can go and park up?
Unless they're in somebody's private property for a specified timeframe and event, but on public streets or public parking lots, they have to have approval from the city and a city of Lewis business license.
Well, that's, thank you for-
I want to go back to-
And also, if it's located in a commercial zoning district where a restaurant is allowed, a food truck is allowed because it is food service.
Yeah, exactly.
So again, they just have to have approval from the property owner, and they're public health.
Yeah, so I want to go back, I think you're raising an interesting point, Councilman Ritter, about what do we allow contractors to do? And we have different rules, like on Saturdays and Sundays for landscapers, I just want to, right? And so I think what you're, you're raising a really interesting point. Now, if your business is inside your home and there's no sound, you know, okay, but no one knows about that, right?
Right.
Right? We're just relying on the honesty of our citizens to apply for a license. But you're suggesting perhaps a change that we should consider?
Let me, let me just ask a question also. So you're, I think it started off initially about whether it'll be a resident with a home business versus now we're talking a contract, contractor?
No, just saying that if a, if a home business is allowed seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and we don't allow outdoor businesses, it seems like we're putting restrictions on our outdoor landscapers.
They're not residents.
They're not residents, true, good point.
They're not residents, well, well-
We do have one that is.
Well, okay, but-
But that wouldn't be in his home. So in other words, you're raising the point is, if you, if you leave your front door, you are now under different rules of the city. But if you're quietly doing woodsmithing in your garage, that's a home business, right? But as soon as you bring that power tool outside, you are in, under different rules, right? Okay. And I think that the reason, and Kevin or Janelle, you could raise this, one of the reasons why the subcommittee on the planning commission put the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is because they heard the need for childcare and senior care. People working full-time who need to drop off their kids, so if you're working at Phoebe or our schools, and you have little ones, there's no place to, except for some of our churches, to drop off kids, but we also heard in those public hearings, some folks- But we also heard in those public hearings, some folks who are taking care of seniors that needed a break and would like to drop off, and maybe they're working in the evening. And so that's one of the reasons why the Planning Commission put this broad, could be up to those timeframes. I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, I'm just saying clarification.
And I'd like to speak to that, please, because this section of code on line one twenty is in the low-impact, and I'm suggesting that if you're operating seven days a week from seven to seven, that that is likely no longer a low-impact. That, that activity is likely not low-impact. It's going on...
Why would that be, why?
Well, you know, the...
If you're doing somebody's tax return and you're doing it at your desk, you wouldn't choose to do it on Saturday, that's a no-impact business.
I agree, but you, the example that you cited with, you know, daycare, you know, that kind of senior care and so forth, I'm suggesting that that is something that is possibly something that is more than low-impact, based on the description offered in here about what is low-impact.
Sure, sure. If you, if you want to set up a daycare in Lewis, let's just use that one, that is not, that is an impact, okay? It's, right? I mean, it's got an impact, because there are people who have to park and drop off their kids.
And you have to have outside space for that daycare, that kind of thing, right?
Correct. So when you'd apply for your license, separate from the state, you know, going through its rules, you would apply, and wouldn't the city planner say, "Oh, no, you're not a no-impact, you're not, you're not compliant with code, you're an impact because you have drop-offs"?
So the current code, as it relates to home, home-based businesses, says, "Customers and client visits to the home-based business shall be limited to the hours of seven AM to nine PM." So it is currently in code, if you have a home-based business, you can work seven days a week if you would like to, and you can work from seven AM to seven PM. The proposal is actually reducing the number of hours you can work from seven AM to seven PM. So it's actually making it more restrictive by limiting the number of hours.
By two hours, right.
Correct.
And this is an opportunity for also, for us to revisit that section of code that you referred to, where we should allow seven to nine.
Correct.
Right, so, yeah.
If you want to expand it to, take it back to nine PM, you are more than welcome to do that.
Or, or bring it forward.
Councilman Mercer, I think you brought up some good points. Again, I'm not against home businesses at all, but I want you to think too, about a term that I've been reading a lot about lately called "commercial creep," and where you have a small town like this, and if you don't manage something like this, we end up looking like some of these towns where all the old homes have businesses in them, I mean, major businesses. And that's not the way the community sections, the neighborhood sections should really look. So I think we need to safeguard against that, but still allow home businesses. And the impact is important, especially with regard to the parking and fighting for parking spaces, we already are having a lot of squabbles over that. So again, that commercial creep, where do we draw the line? We haven't drawn the line with verbos and rentals, and look where we're going, look where a lot of communities have gone. Look at Venice in Italy, look at what they've had to do because of the damages that have been done to their town. So this is really important, folks, and I don't think we should move it ahead until we thoroughly understand it.
Okay, so, so let me just respond to, to that. So I've been an entrepreneur my whole life, and as soon as my business is more successful, I then pay for commercial space, and most entrepreneurs do that. Because in fact, you have employees, and you hope, as an entrepreneur, that you get to the stage where you have people working for you, because you're only going to make your money on your profit related to other people working for you, because you're working 24/7. So I believe that by an impact-based code, because parking is in here, as soon as entrepreneur A says, "Oh, I'm, I'm so successful at whatever I'm doing, I actually now go look for commercial space." That's the next step you go to. You don't, you don't, and also, remember, there are limitations on the percentage of your home that can also be used. So I think the Planning Commission, very much concerned about what you're talking about, Councilman Elder, said, "Let's limit the space inside the home, let's make sure they don't remodel it to the point that it's not a residential unit, and let's have impact." So I think they put some safeguards in.
And, and, well, no, no, excuse me, and further, and further to that point, there is, the safeguard of an annual license comes into play. Because if a business has grown so much, but yet that person is like, "Oh, I'm not going to go, it's going to cost me more to go rent space," and they're going to continue to have four employees and a lot of activity, that's going to come to light from the neighbors and others, or just general, what happens in the world, common sense. And that would then, then be an opportunity at the end of that year to deny that license for them to be renewed.
And the other thing is, is, you know, I think you're always, I don't care how we try to solve the parking issue in Lewis, it is, it is, it probably isn't going to be resolved because the, because families have multiple people with multiple cars, so regardless of trying to make it better, it is still going to be parking, and it's always going to, it's always going to be a parking issue, so this isn't going to resolve or dissolve the parking issue.
I thought maybe it might make it worse.
It might, it might. But again, I think we have, we have the safeguard of the city planner factoring that in, we have, you know, the opportunity for neighbors and others who are concerned about noise and others to lodge a complaint with the police and others. And then, if there is enough of a disturbance or in that area, then at the end of the year, that business license may not be renewed because it's grown beyond, or what was anticipated by the city planner, or if it was a conditional use that came to the mayor and council, you know, we don't know, we're not, we don't have a crystal ball to know every, exactly how every, you know, business is going to play out. And we just have to, like, we're self attesting, there has to be some sense of faith and trust in our, in what we're trying to accomplish here. Sometimes it's not well drafted to our intent, we have to go back and change it. But I think this particular issue has been over a year now, and I think, you know, Kevin Keane and his subcommittee did the city a great service in moving away from listed permitted uses to impact-based, which I think is, is a really solid model. Not, it won't be perfect, like, nothing is perfect, but I think it's an improvement, it's an update to our code, and I think, at least from my perspective, I have enough information now, and after questions and conversation for a year, to move forward. I do have a question about little things like a friendly amendment. I wouldn't mind seeing the, instead of going to the city planner because of putting so much pressure on the city planner, I wouldn't mind seeing the city manager and/or the city planner, or the city manager and the city planner, or designees, something along those lines, that way it's, there's more people potentially involved in dealing with, to your point, Councilman Elder, about stress on staff.
Yeah, I worry about that. Because we're doing a lot of new things right now, and...
Thank you, microphone.
Microphone.
We're doing a lot of things.
Turn it off, please.
I'm sorry. Hello?
No, you pressed the button.
I get it. You pressed that. Yeah, we're doing a lot right now, and I want to make sure we're not stressing them out, and I guess, I don't know what the rush is, I don't know why we rush, I don't know why we have to rush on this, because I still do think there are some issues we need to, to really lay out. And I wonder, from, I wonder, and I know the impact idea is a new concept, but what would have happened if we had just taken the old one and put in the proper categories and had one you'd fill in if you wanted to apply? It would have worked. But now we're looking at impact, which brought up the whole idea of, we haven't really defined impact very well, and, and that makes us think more about the parking issues. So we forced ourselves by using a modern way of doing things into different issues.
Well, I, I like the recommendation of the deputy mayor, that I think it shouldn't say the city planner, though probably de facto it will be. I think it's, this is a challenging issue, so it's the city manager, his or her designate. And I don't know how much more, you know, it's really nice if legislation's clean and easy, but it normally isn't, okay? And so sometimes with a little bit of a leap of faith, you have to say, "We studied it, we've had this in front of us for over a year, Mayor Williams initiated this and said to the Planning Commission, 'Go look at home occupancy.'" They, they did the task, they had hearings, they had subcommittee meetings, and I, I don't, I don't think any piece of legislation is perfect, look at what our federal delegations do, you know?
Oh, my God.
Okay? So here's, we have this shift to impact-based. It's going to have some problems, it's going to have some benefits. It's going to let people know that you can live in Lewis, and you can potentially, following our code, have boutique businesses in your home in a small scale. So I think they did their job. I would, I think with the, with the revision that the deputy mayor has recommended, the city manager, this gives the city manager a lot of authority to say, "Let's say we have a flood of applications, okay? I don't anticipate that, but let's say we do." So she hires a specific outsourced person who works as a planner and goes through them. I mean, there are a lot of different tools, I love the idea of the city manager doing this. I think what this is going to do is, it's going to allow businesses who are already existing to actually come forward out of, you know, in full sunshine, and get their applications in, and then the safeguards are here. And I think very often what we say to the city manager is, "We're going to try something, I don't mean pilot, we're going to try this, but we want you to report back." Like we, this is different, but how we did the, the chief of police and the city manager reported back on the parking related, okay? And we, they had a good plan, it wasn't all perfect, but they kept us current. I do think in council, keeping council current on this, because it is a method change, is a really good idea. But at this point, I'm not sure further deliberations would get us anywhere else, but to see is there a motion, a motion to move it.
I would like to ask, Mayor, before a motion be made, that we give the public time to come up and comment, so that we know what they think. They're sitting in the audience, and if we pass a motion and pass it, we haven't listened to our constituents on, of, on a ordinance that has been revised. So when you revise something, and there are revisions in there, I think they deserve the opportunity to speak.
Excuse me, but this revision, only revision I know of is the city manager designate. What else has been revised?
It's clarifications that the city solicitor...
But I mean, we discussed that at the last, yeah, at the last meeting.
But this is very...
But I'm happy to, I'm happy to hear from people.
Well, I just think, it's, it's been such a hot-button topic...
Right, I'm happy to hear.
That I think it's prudent to listen to them, again.
It's not attached to today's agenda.
No.
Is someone talking?
Excuse me, it's not attached to, this revision?
No, it was never attached.
Not attached?
We just received it when we came in the door this morning.
I understand that, okay. So what I think, what I would recommend we do, I mean, I do believe we've had a lot of public hearings.
Happy to do that.
And I'm happy to listen to people in the room, but that's not necessarily, it's not alerting that there's another hearing on this. I would recommend that we, this is now in front of us, our solicitor has revised this based on our comments at our last public meeting, let's put it on the agenda for approval. In other words, approval or disapproval in December. In other words, let's attach it, we have these revisions, and I want to go through with council if there are any specific revisions. It may pass or not pass, okay? That's our job. But if there are any other changes, the solicitor took our recommendations, made changes, we already have one that's come from the deputy mayor to change city planner to city manager. Are there any other changes you want, and let's put that on the December agenda?
I, I really, I still, I still am not sure that I'm comfortable with the process of the approval and disapproval. As I mentioned, if we're going to disregard the comments in making the decision, even though it meets the criteria and the people don't want it in the neighborhood, if we don't have a solid way to articulate that back to the people, then they don't know, that would be like us, well...
But I would just challenge, we're not disregarding, we're not disregarding public comments, nor did the LPC.
It's said in there that it wouldn't be used in the decision.
Okay. So if an application comes in and it's a potential impact, letters are sent to the neighbors, staff's going to review yes or no. If letters come in and object, then staff's going to let that applicant know, and then they, that applicant for that business license gets to make the decision, do they want to not have the, the potential impact business, or do they want to go forward to the conditional use process? And if they, the applicant gets to choose if they move forward with that conditional use process, then there are two public hearings, one before Planning Commission and one before mayor and council notifying them of the opportunity for them to speak.
So that's what I would like to see, attached to this, I would like to see that form with that, that, that schematic of how this works, because you say it, and you said it at the last meeting, but I was having a hard time wrapping my head around it, and then I see this, and a lot of people...
Well, it's written, it's written in the ordinance, but I think you're raising a good point, sure. It's in the ordinance, the process that Janelle, our city planner, just described, and our solicitor described, is in this draft that was not attached to the agenda, so that's one of my main reasons it's moving to December. But I think what you're hearing is that the city manager needs to designate, with the combination of the city planner and the city solicitor, just a sheet, like a fact sheet, this is how it works. It's here in ordinance, but I agree with you, it's not in layman's terms. Let's get it in, I think that's a great recommendation.
Great. The other thing that, that I, in my explorations, I asked for a spreadsheet on all of the business licenses that we have, and I know it had seventeen hundred lines on it, and there are different categories, I, I would like to know what the revenue is in each one of those categories. I haven't been able to see that, because what we're doing is, all we're doing is taking something and putting it in another box. So how's it going to look in that box? I, I was trying to wrap my head around that, because when I went out to look at, well, where are the small businesses? And I called and I asked, "Well, we don't know which ones are home businesses, and we don't know which ones are..." They couldn't tell, that's going to take, that's why I said, "I think it needs to go to the finance committee and have them do some financial analysis on this, and what is the cost? What's the cost benefit of this?" We definitely need to have home businesses, but it'd be nice if we have a little more detail and be making it, our decisions based upon hard data. I'm a data person, I like to see data before I make decisions.
So rather than, I'm going to pause on the efficiency study, because we don't do cost-benefit analysis by ordinance, okay? That would be a different practice. Are you asking as council and as a city treasurer, that you want the data to say, "What is the current revenue that the city receives from people who do come in and ask for a business license?" What, I want to ask, I want to see what the data is.
But what does that, what would that do, have to do with the passing of this ordinance, knowing the revenue?
So can I, so are you suggesting, I think what you're suggesting is a typical cost-benefit analysis, this, the, the hours that staff and others are going to dedicate to this versus the revenue it generates?
How much does it cost to collect it in this manner?
I mean...
How much did it cost to collect it before?
Those are typically done, but I think on much larger projects...
They're going to need extra personnel. I mean, I heard, "Well, if it gets too complicated, we'll just hire another person." You don't just pass an ordinance and just, "Let's hire another person."
Well, let's do two things. Let's find out total revenue in the last several years from businesses who do report, which is not a hundred percent of all businesses, home businesses. Let's also have a sheet that is the, the schematic of the process in layman's terms, okay? I think those two things are probably the clearest thing we need at this point.
I think that's helpful.
Right? Okay, that would be, would be helpful. Trying to think if there's anything else, and again, I'm not saying that you approve or disprove, what else do you need, going back to Councilman Brown Hicks, what else do you need, you could be against this or for this, what else do you need to have better informed decision-making? I would suggest the form. So when I fill out my business license application, it's the same form I've used several years, why don't we mock up the form with what the questions are, okay?
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful.
Then there'd be some clarity of, "Oh, look, I'm..." Then there'd be some clarity of, oh, look, I'm, and you know, when, when there's that block that says, I self-certify that this information is accurate, that's a legal statement, okay? So let's do the form.
And on that form, if it was written out, Councilman Ritter had asked the question, well, how do you know that they're really legit? Well, can we see that form that they're going to fill out to show that they're really legit and what they are doing? And do we have our enforcement on that same form? It should be a packet that when they walk in, this is what I'm talking about, we're gonna do with the trash study. We're gonna have it soup to nuts organized with the changes we're making in the ordinance. And it's gonna be clean.
So if those three pieces are there, again, I'm focusing on, what other information do you need to make whatever decision you wanna make? We have three pieces that we're asking the city manager to have, and it's, it's a quick turnaround before our December meeting.
May I speak?
Mm-hmm, sure.
I think you're driving towards us making contributions right now for the days to, for staff and council to. And what I would like to do is just be given the opportunity of time, the grace of time, to read this one more time. I got this, I received this document this morning at 8:30. And I read it very, very quickly, but I would like to go through it, you know, slower and then come back with questions and so forth.
Yep, exactly.
So, so whatever you all decide right now, please understand, as far as I'm concerned, that it is subject to change if I make, if I have other questions or statements.
What I would say as colleagues, if any of us have, which I think it's a very good, I don't, you know, you know, I don't like ordinance decisions on the fly.
Yeah, this is not, yeah.
So we'll read it through. If you have a question, pose it so we all know what your question is.
Right.
Pose it to the city manager, okay? And the city solicitor and the city planner. Those three are the two, colon, copy all of council. Remember, council, do not reply all. This is not a serial meeting. But then we're all aware of each other's questions, okay? So it's not about whether you're for or against. It's about what data do you need to make the most informed decision?
Correct.
Okay? All right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And you might suggest even a deadline. We could agree on a deadline for making those submissions.
How's tomorrow? No, I'm just teasing, just teasing, just teasing.
It doesn't work for me.
No, it doesn't work for any of us, no. Okay, so.
A point of clarity, because I heard CM and planner, CM or designate.
CM and designate.
Then I heard CM, so I just.
CM or his or her designate.
Okay. I just needed clarity on that.
So Janet, look at the calendar so that the form would be attached. So the deadline, Councilman Ritter, for our comments has to leave enough time for the city manager to make sure those three pieces are there. So our meeting is December 8th, okay? So we have to post on the first.
So we have a holiday, the 27th and 28th. I would say we would need that by the 24th, which is Monday, so that we can.
Next Monday.
It's next Monday.
Yeah. But, but we can post the agenda anytime during the day on the first, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
But if you have questions, the deadline we're looking for is the deadline you're asking for. It's the 24th. So let's, let's hold ourselves to the 24th so that the city manager and staff have some time.
All right.
Very little time, given the holiday, to respond. But you know the three that we're already asking for, okay? And then, yes, you can post anytime. And often, Ashley, sometimes we have to post at 10, late at night. But we try our best to post by noon.
Right.
Right, that's our practice when we can. Okay? All right? Okay? All right, let's move on to.
Break.
You need a break? Yeah, go ahead and take a break. We'll take a couple-minute break. Ready for discussion of E2? Discussion possible action regarding the definition of kennels under City Code 197-45, use restrictions for home-based business. And so I'm gonna again start with our solicitor, because you've made some changes.
Mayor? So approaches you could take here. One would be to simply make this part of the larger topic we just discussed and. Piece of larger home business discussion referring to the specific definitions of animal training. So only change from the 10th is overnight in animal kennels and animal training. So more specifically, animal kennel is any structural premise in which the animals are boared overnight. And that definition continues. And for animal training, that definition is the training of two or more animals for compensation, but not boarded overnight. So those are the only changes from the last meeting.
Okay. And just for clarification, so animal kennel is not allowed? Is that right, city planner, within the city of Lewis?
Correct. The use, as, as a whole, is prohibited.
Is prohibited.
Within the city of Lewis.
Okay. All right, so let's have a, I guess what I'd like to frame the discussion is, let's go to pet grooming, 'cause we all know that's perhaps the one we've heard most about from the public and from applicants. If pet grooming is pulled out of animal kennel, which is what we've all been talking about, so it's specific, it's an impact-based business, right? Right? So if it's an impact-based business and we pass an impact-based code, then it goes through that schematic that we've talked about that says, sorry, that's no, that's, that's not non-impact, that's an impact. And then the city planner, the city manager or her designate takes an action. And let's say that action is it's whatever level of impact. And then an applicant who wants to do that somewhere in Lewis has the right to counter and come up with a conditional use to council. But really, isn't the only issue the two? The one the solicitor had was, we pulled it out of the definition. So we know we're not boarding animals anywhere in Lewis, but we're knowing that pet grooming is an impact-based business, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, makes sense, right? So, and then it follows a process if we approve the impact process.
So the only question I would have is, I would like to ask the assistant city manager, would that be problematic for you folks to be able to make that determination?
I think that, I'm sorry.
Would it be burdensome, in other words, would it?
We can certainly get it done. I think it's, yes, we can get it done.
All right. So remember that we can still have discussion on motions. I would ask for a motion about this clarification, which is a definition change. I'm helping whoever's gonna do the motion. It's pulling out pet grooming from the definition of kennel. Go ahead, city planner, wanna comment?
It would be the amendment to the definition of animal kennel. It would be a new definition for animal training and a new definition for pet grooming to be for chapter 197-106 definitions.
The motion is to do that in our code. It's not making a comment about any one business. It's just doing it in the code.
It's not, we're not doing this for, for the ordinance, right? The ordinance is later. But we're changing something else in code.
You can be adopting.
Deleting groomed, which has been the case. Bred, reared, or raised, and deleting or trained, and then keeping, maintaining for commercial gain. And I can go through each of the definitions if you'd like. For animal training, starting on line 191, the training of two or more animals for compensation, but not boarded. And again, for this meeting, the term overnight is added as a clarification. Not boarded overnight on the premises. And then for pet grooming, that definition has not been changed from the last meeting. And I just wanted to echo again the neighbor, the mayor's comments that we're not speaking about any particular business here. We're making ordinances that apply universally.
I would entertain a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment as, as written. Does that work?
That works.
Okay.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstain, okay. And because this is an ordinance change, we have to have reasons. Okay, so I'll do the start. We'll just go Joe and then it's up.
I believe it makes sense to have some grooming in, in, pet grooming in houses based upon the conditions, the impact in the community, and make sure that it works into the neighborhood according to the ordinance that we're entertaining. But even so, without the ordinance that we're entertaining, this would still make it very workable.
Deputy Mayor, you're ready?
I'm voting aye because this focuses on the preeminent issue of impact.
Grant Hicks?
I vote aye as the language. I feel the language is appropriate as written.
I'm voting, he doesn't have to. When you abstain, you really don't have to, right? That's always the rule. You can just abstain, which I know frustrates. And sometimes when people comment, that causes other issues. So we recognize abstain. I vote aye because I think this is clarification. And I think that from the public hearings, one of the issues was that overnight, lots of animals in a home. And so I think this is responsive to the public comments, okay? With that, we are completed with that piece. Okay, let's move on to new business, F1. Discussion regarding request from property owners of 305 Mulberry Street to enter into a license agreement regarding encroachments into the right-of-way. This is a staff comment. Who's taking this from staff? City manager or city planner?
I guess I can try this one. Property went for sale, it was transferring ownership. And as part of the transfer of ownership, the survey was provided and, and it was noted that the part of the front porch, the steps and the brick planters are in the city's right-of-way. So the property owner is asking for a license agreement to allow the porch, the steps and the brick planters to continue to encroach into the city's right-of-way. This house is in the historic district. This house predates zoning. So I think they're just.
An existing condition.
It's an existing condition that has existed for a very long time. Staff noted it as legal non-conforming, again, 'cause it predates zoning. So they're just asking for appropriate relief in the legal process that, so there's no issues in the future. Alex?
I'll just add that the license application procedure under code calls for an item like this to be discussed at a workshop. And if you don't have any questions about this, then the next meeting, there would be a license agreement in draft form for you to consider. But essentially, we're documenting what's already there.
So do they kind of have a lease on it then? Or?
Nothing.
But, but if, if the house, for some reason, would be removed, do they lose the ability to encroach then? Okay.
Yes.
That's, that's good clarification.
Have you, the license itself would run with the property, is that correct? So that it would be something that would be recorded as a, you know, attached to the deed, to the title, is that right?
Hasn't been drafted yet.
I understand that.
It could be drafted that way, yes.
And, and it would not have a term associated with it? Or is the term associated with, as Joe spoke to, the demolition of the building, that would retire the license? Is that correct?
The intent here from the letter from the property owner, which is embedded in the agenda, would be so that they would be able to resale, sell this house in the future, being zoning compliant.
Right.
And so if the structure was destroyed, it would not be able to be reconstructed. The license agreement could be structured so that there would be an annual application fee, which is standard. And clarifying whether the license agreement is particular to the property owner or, in this case, the property owner is requesting that it would apply to future owners.
Right.
So I've got a question. I mean, we have a lot of encroachment, all historic homes, okay? It's just reality. Code comes in, roads are different, okay? We know that. And I think it's good clarification so that property owners knows that if their property was hit by a storm or they wanted to remodel it, that they can't.
Absolutely.
You can't go back in and encroach. But if you are encroaching, you're encroaching. My question, and I know this is in our code, and I'm not trying to say things don't come in front of council, but I am trying to say, like, look at the last hour we spent on a very critical issue. That is really valuable. In my personal opinion, I think our city manager should be empowered to address these, which I know would mean an ordinance revision. And he or she, the city manager. And he or she, the city manager or designee, city planner, could raise it if there's a problem. But I feel like there's an efficiency... We have a city management structure, all right? If we have a city management structure, then let's empower the city manager to take these actions. I don't know why these items come in. I understand why they come in council, because we have it in our ordinance, but I'm kind of challenging that process. Okay?
I'm not... Say that you might want to consider threshold for...
Yes.
...come before council. There could be a license agreement seeking a large amount of city land. And then maybe that could be something that comes before city council. But if it's a few inches of city land, maybe that's administrative.
Well, I agree with you. Is there any way we can get out and, you know, once we get this cleaned up, get this out to them so that they can make sure their properties are saleable and all the things that go along with that? Because we know that Lewis grew organically. You know, we have to deal with it all the time. But that would make them sleep better at night, too.
I think that's a good comment, and I also think our citizens do challenge understandably efficiency of government. So just look at what we've done to ourselves. We have this property owner who says, historically, sorry, I'm encroaching. Now, we have to discuss it, and then we have to go to another step. That part, you know, puts my hair on fire. When it's important and critical, threshold or whatever, yes, of course, we have to debate that in front of the public. But again, we're fortunate. We have a city management structure. Let's look at what code we have to change or threshold so that future residents can just go to the city and have a conversation and a deed attachment. I think the end result is really important. I'm just talking about the administrative procedure could be handled by a city management staff.
I have no problem with... Excuse me. I have no problem with what you're suggesting. I understand the licensing thing. But the licensing agreement, I believe, is a document that requires... I think it requires city, some member of council to sign off on it.
I don't know for that, but it could also be a consent agenda item. In other words, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand that.
Yeah. So I think that's the process.
Treat it like we do our land lease, is what you're suggesting.
That's what I'm suggesting.
And I, when I asked my questions earlier, I was not raising those questions to object to this ask at all, to this license request. It was just for the purpose of asking questions.
I didn't hear it as a rejection.
Yeah.
At all. Okay, so I would... So let's take what's ahead of us, and then we'll take a separate action. So, Alex, our action is to approve or not approve?
So, in this case, the action would be a vote. And essentially, if you're favorable to the license agreement request, it would be a direction to me or staff to prepare the license agreement in draft form.
So I need that motion.
Hey, I make a motion that we create that a licensing agreement be attached and given to our solicitor. Am I heading in the right direction?
You're asking him to draft it?
To draft a licensing agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. And that is specific to the property located at 305 Mulberry?
Yes.
And it's that license into the right-of-way?
Yes. Further discussion on the motion? Not, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. All right. And then I'm going to take an administrative action to say, let's get our city manager and solicitor to look at these things next year, okay? This is an urgent request. And look at it and see where we can revise code on this. And if you want to go to Dennis Rieden's group, too. You have a lot of options to go to, but let's make sure our focus is on the critical things we need, could be threshold. Okay. All right. We are now open to public comment. This is public comment related to... You are on a clock on this public comment. So give us your name, your address, and you are on a three-minute clock. But we welcome...
Carrie, you got your clock.
We'll start with those...
She's talked out. Oh, no, she's up.
She's up. She gets her clock.
No one else is there. I hate that clock. But you don't start to run it until I say my name and get situated. It doesn't start. It's like the Gong Show. You know, they come out and get you on the Gong Show if you've stayed too long.
You're dating yourself, Carrie.
I'd love that show. If they brought it back, I'd watch TV again. All right, here we go. Carrick Park Avenue. We've heard that the proposed licensing change is driven because of the modern trend to encourage home businesses. Such changes generally refer to licensing people who are now working from home on a computer without impact on the city. That's most important if your city collects missed income tax, but ours doesn't. So Lewis is proposing a complicated licensing system to earn money from licensing fees. The city won't break even. If the city charges $100, the city planner has to evaluate applications under subsection E, mediate with objecting neighbors, monitor the business for compliance during the year, and kick out people that don't comply. Assuming the city planner gets paid about $75,000 a year, her hourly rate will not profit. Today, we had amendments. We're going to have the city manager involved. She's already overworked. And then it was proposed that we would just hire somebody new. That's not going to work either. So, Joe says he can't even figure out how much money we generate from this. Think about it. If... Or is this really just about Big Brother in government? Think of the scenario. One person has a business in DC. He works from home, maybe goes into his office occasionally. The city of Lewis never hears from him. He doesn't need a license. Yet his partner does online medical billing for a company in DC, totally remote, works totally remote from DC, has to work out of her house. They both sit in front of a computer all day in Lewis with no clients visiting and no impact on the city. Is it fair one needs to disclose and pay a license? Or is the guy in DC, what the DC office, now going to start to pay as well? So, this is about sending a message that Lewis is open for business. Come on down. But unlike some areas that have become business-friendly to home businesses, Lewis doesn't need more people. They already move here in droves. They pay because Lewis is a sleepy historic town. So when has our city's pro-business needs taken over the needs of the residents' dreams to come to a sleepy town and get away from pressures? The proposal will remove the traditional separation between work and home life. And I think it's the latter that our citizens treasure. If council does go on with this, there's still worrisome bias issues in the amendment of subsection E. Language changes from arbitrate to discuss and clarify. Why bother? If the planner is going to mediate with neighbors, are they trained? If she can't decide beyond code, then it goes to council to object. That procedure should merely attach copies of the objections, not the planner's summary, so council can decide. And finally, I think you made a mistake on the changes to the zoning ordinance about animals. Our forefathers knew that we should not have living animals in a for-profit business in the city. They knew that kenneling dogs was unfair to neighbors. So how is that different from, say, a dog grooming business that has drop-off, where dogs will need to wait a cumulative eight hours for pickup? I know that my dog Calvin the Wonder Dog barks more at night than when he's sleeping.
Okay, other comments from those in the room?
Can you note there was clapping afterwards for the record?
All right. I'd like to repeat, my name is Bob Heffernan, 510 Railroad Avenue. I would like to repeat everything that Carrie said, but I'll save you that, and tell you that you're just foolish to consider that. The impact, as Carrie pointed out, if somebody's sitting at a computer and maybe they need a business license. Now, I have a business. I don't have a business license because I called up the city 10 years ago and said, do I need one? And you said no. So if you want me to get a business license, I'll apply. I run a company, Galactic Headquarters of Access for You is at 510 Railroad Avenue. Nobody ever comes. On the issue of the animal businesses, much discussion. But the vet who lived in the house on the corner is moving out and selling. The next-door neighbor, Rob, his dog, his name is George, is selling. I watched him carry the stuff out on Saturday morning. Those are votes. Those are people who've said their piece. Maybe not formally. I guess Rob has been here. And the whole idea that you're going to test the neighbors at a point in time is ridiculous. It's not a standard. It's foolish. If my wife, who's a pleasant person, wants to start the business, she'd probably get all the neighbors signed up. If I wanted to start the same business, I might not. That's not a standard by the city. That's not legislation. That's not an ordinance. That's a popularity contest. You know? Now, maybe somebody wants to start a kitchen or something and make tomato sauce, but maybe Bob wants to do something that's smelly. You know? It's the impact, whole idea, is just foolish. You ought to rethink it, send it back, think about it. But this is just foolish at this point. And I agree with all the stuff Carrie said.
Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else in the room like to make a comment? All right? Yes, come forward, please.
Is it good morning still?
Good afternoon, though. It is still good.
My name is Patricia Lazek. I live at 401 Savannah Road. I am the veterinarian on the corner. I didn't move. I'm still there. And I just want to say, I have been opposed to the animal grooming business, mostly because it uses... Animals are involved. And I don't think anybody understands the impact of animals being in a business as well as I do. At my veterinary hospital, which is located an hour away in Smyrna, you know, I have to do these meetings by Zoom because I am there. We have grooming on occasion. It is not the primary focus of my veterinary hospital. My focus is the wellness of animals and the prevention of disease in animals and the prevention of parasite spread. And I have sent an email to city council regarding all those things that I see could be potential problems with the dog grooming. Dogs come in to be groomed because they have fleas. And you can wash them away, but you don't always kill them all. And if you have a non-porous floor, like I do, it's non-porous. It's got coving on the side and everything. Those larvae, those eggs that drop and then turn into larvae are killed. We use a product called Rescue. We clean between appointments the entire room. And we don't have a flea problem. But if you have a concrete floor in a basement, fleas love dark, they love moisture, and they love hosts, which are the pets. And, you know, there's... Who's guaranteeing that these animals are on preventative before they come in? Who's guaranteeing that these dogs are vaccinated prior to coming in and therefore not spreading kennel cough or other diseases that we do vaccinate for? You know, when they come to us, they're coming to get vaccinated so they can go to their groomers. We're not promoting grooming in our facility. We're promoting having your pet properly protected against kennel cough, having them licensed for rabies, which is a state law, so that if they bite a groomer, they're not dealing with, you know, six-month quarantine on that, four-month quarantine, they just changed it, on the pet, and the groomer having to go get post-rabies exposure vaccines. There's so many animal layers on this thing that I don't know if y'all have considered all that. It's going to... It's not been completely flushed out. And I also don't know who's going to enforce any of the requirements. You know, I have a license. I get it renewed every year. I have a business license. I get that renewed every year. It needs to be really thought through as to having it in a historic, connected townhome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Perfect timing. Okay, anyone else in the room that'd like to make a comment?
Hi, my name is Sarah at 405 Savannah Road. I am the dog groomer that everybody loves and hates, especially my neighbors. I'm glad Patricia went before because, like she said, that she cares for animals. They are vaccinated and whatever. And it is a state law that you have to have your dogs on rabies and on certain shots. I, again, would like to state that any groomer, and I worked for many groomers, from PetSmart to, you know, any one of the major chains, that we do not allow dogs or cats that are unvaccinated into our facility. And I am pretty sure not every dog or animal has fleas. That is a misconception, which I'm surprised that she would say something like that, where all animal, all dogs that will be getting groomed have fleas. That is a lie. Not all dogs have fleas. And again, that's up to any pet parent. They have to get their dogs vaccinated. They have to have their flea medications, heartworms. That's up to the pet parent. I am just there to make sure that, you know, if you can't cut your dog's hair or keep them in a health schedule or whatever for any pet care maintenance, that is my job. And like she says, after every client, she cleans. I'm pretty sure that after every client that I have, I will be cleaning. And not only will I be cleaning with, you know, all the pet-regulated cleanings, I'm actually adding, and if she had read my business report that I had given in one of these meetings, that I am actually adding an extra layer of a blue light or the blue light technology that actually covers a lot more ground than just what you spray on your counters. I just want to let you know that this is, yes, a historical row home. We do not have shared plumbing. And that is, again, a fact that is just... Them, our neighbors, are just spreading lies. And this is not right. I am fighting just to groom a dog one at a time, which means it's not going to be an impact on our business. Yes, I do have my mother, who lives two doors down, with a driveway. And she's already said that if we do get a business, she would allow us to use the driveway for all my clients to come in. We do, around the corner, have a 15-minute, you know, parking area that you're allowed 15 minutes to park. It is not my job or my... I'm not there to enforce if anybody else is using that allotted space for 15 minutes. I just want to let you know that my business is going to go with all the, like, the laws that we have, all the ordinances that we've already put in place. There is nothing new. Everybody knows that I'm not going to be a PetSmart. I already have several clients now in the area who are asking and waiting to walk to my house. They are not driving. They will be walking to my house. So I just want to let you know that my business, we want it to be locally focused. We don't want to have outsiders driving in. I mean, we may do or whatever, but it's not going to be a thing where it's so dramatically impactful on parking when we already have a 15-minute designated parking spot. We already have all these things where I can't have, like, a dog barking for more than 15 minutes at a time because we have a noise ordinance. than 15 minutes at a time because we have a noise ordinance. I just want to let you guys know that all the things that I've been trying to do, I've already have ordinances in place. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room would like to speak?
Steven Matthews, 405 Savannah. I want to bring it back to, to the business because this is bigger than us. This is about the city and what makes sense. I'm glad to see that the definitions were clarified because those are definitions that you can look up in any, any dictionary and get something very similar. So I'm glad to see some common sense put in place there. I'm bringing it back to the, the code that is, that is before you guys. I have a couple of questions because it seems like if there is a, if there is a neighbor that objects to the process, it automatically goes to conditional use, which incurs a cost and the impact on the city. I don't know if you guys have considered that that could be possibly misused and punish people for just trying to open a business. And somebody says, I object because of this. And the city manager or the designee just has to go, oh, there's an objection. It's got to go conditional use, felt conditional use, go before city council, and follow that process, which is, seems like an additional burden. The whole point of this ordinance was to bring people out of the light, to lower the level of effort it takes to bring businesses into the, not into the city, the, to bring businesses out of the shadow that we already know are operating in the city. So to lower that barrier of entry, get them, get them online or out in the open. And I don't see this, I object from a neighbor, being part of that lowering. It is being applied to only one business category in the low-impact category. And that seems directly unfair. And as other people have been, have said in other meetings, this whole process has been disproportionately focused on one business that was already denied. And you're supposed to be looking at this from a citywide perspective. So I don't see how that administrative process for animal businesses can be allowed to stay in the low-impact category if we are specifically excluding any one applicant. Thank you.
Else in the room would like to make a comment? Blue, let's look online. Anybody who is attending would like to speak? Raise your hand. I see one. Yes. Robert Huber. We're opening your mic, so go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Robert Huber. I'm the owner of 407 Savannah Road. I have just a lot of concerns with the business as a pet grooming being next door. I can even hear my neighbors through the walls. I, you know, everything, I, the door was not that Sarah and Steven want to use for this business, was never originally there. It was done, I think, before there was zoning. I'm worried about, you know, hours that they would want to have a business. I'm concerned with the smell and everything. It, it, it's just put me to a point where I've put my house up for sale because I don't want to live next to this. And it's not like this is a separate house. These are four row houses together. We're, we live very close to each other. So my house is for sale right now because of this. And the animosity that has come from them, from Steven and Sarah and their mother Elaine Conway, have, I, I, I couldn't even rent the house this summer because I was worried about what kind of conflicts they would have with anybody I rented it. So the city lost the revenue from me renting my house this summer, even though I had a permit to do it. I would just hope you would consider not, not approving this type of business in this specific area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online that'd like to make a comment? Seeing none. Okay. Given that, I'd like a motion for adjournment of the mayor and city council workshop. Second? Did I get a second? Okay, all approved. All right. Thank you all.